That didn't work.
It is now five o'clock. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McEckren.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy is absent from tonight's meeting.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone present that others.
Were you going to speak tonight, sir, or just leave your information? Did you want to address the council tonight or just leave your information?
May I have your card? Let's let me do it right. Pastor Robert Richardson. Okay, you can now take the.
And we had a lot of crime that was going on in my neighborhood. And we came down and you all gave us a reference to the Chief of Police. The Chief of Police responded right away. He came out. And he brought out the coordinator for the Neighborhood Watch Program, Ms. Hudson. And they established with us a Neighborhood Watch Program. And we got ten persons as a committee. And we established our street. And we gave leaflets to everybody in my neighborhood. That worked well. Our crime went down. Then we started to expand the other streets. Then we was able to quieten down at least four streets in my neighborhood. And what happened, they began to expand to tell other folk that came out, said, "Oh, it used to be kind of rowdy." You know, but you've quietened down and everything. And the reports from the police department, we had no more crime. Everybody was calling. If they saw anything suspicious, they would call in. And we got great response from the police department. So that quietened it down. But I worked with also a homeless shelter there on Armigosa. And it's been there over twenty something years. And the problem is that they getting a large number of homeless folk until they can't handle it. Barstow is sending folk in. We're getting folks out of Adelanto now. Now, I've been ministering there for the last two years. And I know the owner real well. He's thinking about trying to enlarge because he still want to help the neighborhood. And they are getting reports where that so many of homeless folks are sleeping around the businesses and they defecating and all these type of reports. And nobody want to throw nobody away. But we are trying to enlarge. And we started like a small board session where we have sessions come in on Thursdays and whatever days that we all can meet together. Jimmy Walden is the CEO over there. So I said, "Well, I'll go before the board and see if we can, what kind of answers that we can get from you. How can we get this enlarged? What can we do to take all of the homeless folks off the street? Clean up Victorville completely." So that was one of the things that I wanted to say, other than I appreciate what have happened to my neighborhood by me coming to you and getting support from you. That has worked beautifully. And we thank you for that. So whatever we can, information that we can get from you. Now Target has a building that's vacant. And look like we got information that we thought that, I think Kaiser wanted to touch it.
That's three minutes, sir.
They wouldn't, so if you can, then answer it.
Pastor, the council's prohibited by law from responding to anything that's not on the agenda. But I want you to know that actually my staff is working with Jimmy on some of the issues at the shelter there. So we have a good relationship there. We're also working with the county on some other homeless issues that we're very close to having an announcement regarding. So we are very aware of the situation and look forward to working with you and Jimmy to help resolve it for Victorville and for the whole Victor Valley.
Thank you so much. At this time, may we have declaration of closed session items by the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have eight items agendized this evening for closed session. Item A is on behalf of the Water District and it is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property is designated on the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. Item B is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. And the facts and circumstances related to that litigation are set forth on the agenda pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. The remaining six items are all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And that litigation involves COMAV and the Airport Authority and City of Victorville. Various cases and the case names and numbers are set forth on the agenda. Items C and D on behalf of the City Council. Items E, F, G, and H all on behalf of the Airport Authority. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session.
Oh, really? No.
Oh. It's a consent item to polish houses.
Yep, sue him. Sue the governor.
Number nine, abatement and demolition using CD beach funds for four houses. Clear. Read it. I don't know why we can't have who, why, when, or what, how with.
It's city boys. City boys. Oh, how funny. Yeah, you didn't stand out at all.
It is now six o'clock, October 18th, 2016. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McEckren.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy is absent from tonight's meeting.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had eight items on the agenda this evening. Item A was on behalf of the Water District. It was property, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property APN number and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Item B was anticipated litigation on behalf of the City Council pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. And the facts and circumstances pertaining to that are set forth on the agenda pursuant to Government Code 54956.9E3. The remaining items C and D on behalf of the City Council and the remaining four items, E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority, all pertain to pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. And the parties to the litigation and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. Again, C and D being on behalf of the City Council and the other four being on behalf of the Airport Authority. And at this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will have the invocation by Pastor Dane Davis from First Christian Church. And then we will have our police chiefs and Lucia lead us on the pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. In James 1, we read these words, "If any of you lacks wisdom, he should ask God, who gives generously without finding fault, and it will be given to him. But when he asks, he must believe and not doubt, because the one who asks is like a wave tossed back and forth by the sea, blown and tossed by the wind." Let's pray. Father, we come to you in faith, believing that you are a God who hears and answers prayer. And so we thank you for this privilege you give us before each of these City Council meetings, to come before the Creator of the universe and ask for your guidance, ask for your wisdom, and ask for your courage, Lord, to walk in unity with making decisions for the betterment of the city and for your honor and glory. I pray for our mayor. I pray for each of the City Council members here tonight. I pray, Lord, for our city manager and all the staff of the city, Lord, that you would guide them with their decisions. We thank you so much for bringing us through some tumultuous years here in this city. And we, Lord, ask and pray that the days to come would be brighter and better than the days behind us. Be with this team. We pray tonight. Be with this council in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have one presentation of a proclamation. This will be presented by our councilman Negretti.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I appreciate it. I am very honored and happy to be here today to do a presentation. Will Valerie Hatcher, Principal at University Preparatory High School, please come forward and join me? I am pleased to present this proclamation to University Prep for being named a National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. I understand University Prep is the only high school, I'm sorry, is the only high desert school to win this prestigious award twice. This recognition is just one of many awards University Prep has won since its formation in 2005. I, along with the entire Victorville City Council, want to tell you how proud we are of you and your school, your staff, your students, and your parents. Congratulations to you, Principal Hatcher, and your entire team at University Prep.
Just on behalf of our school district, Victor Valley Union High School District, and our staff and students and parents at University Prep, we really appreciate this proclamation. And we will definitely do you proud. We will continue to do the hard work of educating your students. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add one more thing. There are a lot of positives about living in the high desert. And one of the ones that gets talked about all the time is the cost of living and the cost of housing. But to combine that with a high-quality school like University Prep, we are really blessed. So thank you again.
City clerk, will you please present the agenda to the council and any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda. Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. So we move on to public hearings. And item B1, a public hearing to receive citizen and agency comments regarding needs, goals, and funding priorities for the development of the fiscal year 2017, 2018, 2021, 2022 consolidated plan. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do have some cards. And I will call out the first name here. Kate Tebow. And after her, after her will be Brenda Sutherland Casa.
Great pronunciation of the name. That never happens.
Oh, thank you.
So. Good evening. My name is Kate Tebow and I'm with Grid Alternatives. We are a nonprofit solar contractor that installs no-cost solar on homes of low-income homeowners. We also provide free, hands-on solar installation job training to anyone who's interested in a career in solar or just wants to learn about solar as a clean renewable energy option. You may not have heard of us, but we've been assisting low-income homeowners in the City of Victorville for some time now. To date, we've solarized 13 households, installing over 48 kilowatts of clean renewable energy. This represents a total savings to those families of over $517,000 over the 25-year lifetime of the systems. It also prevents 1,000 tons of greenhouse gases, which is equivalent to taking 200 cars off the road for one year. In addition, these installations have provided over 2,100 hours of free solar installation job training. So that's what we've already done. But what I would like to talk to you now about is what we can do in the future. The City of Victorville's Climate Action Plan addresses the option of solar as a means for greenhouse gas reduction. In this plan, the city is anticipating approximately 20% of existing single-family homes will have solar installed by the year 2020. With single-family Affordable Solar Home, or SASH rebates, and cap-and-trade funding that's available in this area currently, and with additional funding from CDBG, Grid can help the City of Victorville meet these goals by installing solar on the homes of residents who would not otherwise be able to afford it. In addition, each funded installation would provide 160 hours of free job training. That works out to 10 job trainees at each install, 16 hours per install. This is a win-win for the city, helping to meet climate goals and providing job training in an industry that is growing at a rate of 20% a year. I hope that I've explained Grid and the work we're doing sufficiently in the time allotted tonight. And I hope that you would strongly consider our CDB application when it comes before you. Thank you for your time and I'm open to any questions if you have them.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. After Brenda, I will have Cassandra Black.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Brenda Sutherland and I'm the High Desert Community Outreach Coordinator for CASA of San Bernardino County. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate. We are currently have over 260 young people that are on the waiting list for CASA. What we do is we advocate on behalf of foster youth. We train, screen, and recruit volunteers for CASA to assist with foster youth. I'm a little nervous and I don't know why. But I'd like to express to you what are, what the urgency is right now for CASA. And just for our community, our county in general. Currently, for the year 2015, there were 32,000 referrals to children family services. And out of that 32,000, as it relates to the high desert, there were 1,444 that were related to Adelanto. And Apple Valley, 1,480 referrals for children family services. Barstow, 906. Hisperia, 1,722. And for Victorville, 3,192 referrals for children family services. As you see those numbers, you realize the urgency there is for needing assistance in dealing with foster youth. The roles of foster care is tripling and doubling and social workers are unable to keep up with those numbers. And as a CASA, what we do is we come along a side of that foster youth and we mentor them and we encourage them and get them through the system. We need more volunteers. Having 260 youth waiting for a volunteer is difficult at best because we're constantly getting more referrals from the courts and from social workers saying, "Please help these youth." We ask that you continue to partner with us. We thank you so much for your funding of us this year. This is our first year requesting CDBG funding and we were given funding as a result of the need. But I want you to realize the impact that being in the foster care system have on children. Not only does it just makes it difficult for them to get through just everyday things, but even 30 and 40 years down the road, it still impacts them. I'm out doing research and resource meetings and community outreach often. And I run across former foster youth that are adults with their own children. And you can still see the pain of being in foster care. Somehow, we need to do a better job in taking care of those children. They're the forgotten and CASA is here helping those children that are the forgotten. We ask that you continue to support us, continue to work with us. And more importantly, get the word out that CASA is there to help children who need the help more than anything. They need to be remembered, that they are the victims in this. And we're here to support them. And we thank you for your support. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question for.
Yes, sir.
Number for Victorville, I had to keep up with them, but it seemed rather high.
It's 3,192. And these are referrals, not necessarily children that have been removed, but are referrals. And that, that means the contacts that are coming into the system. Now, realize that even at that number, there are so many more that have not come through. Contacts have not been made. So it doesn't mean that we're doing a bad job. It just means that the number of contacts and referrals that are coming into the city.
I didn't mean to indicate in any way a bad job. I was surprised by the large number.
And so was I, sir. So was I. 32,000 referrals for the county of San Bernardino. That tells you that there is a huge need, not only, not only in our county, but in the country. Over 600,000 nationwide. 600,000. So that, yes, ma'am.
Are some of these referrals duplicated, possibly?
Could be, could be. You know, and when you're getting calls in that needs to be investigated, some are substantiated, some are unsubstantiated. And in that, it means that there have been some contact made with those families. And also, the number one goal is to reunite families. That's our, that's our goal. And to make sure that the families are getting the resources that they need. So it may mean that not just necessarily removal of the children, but it may mean that they're providing services to that family, to strengthen that family.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Evening, mayor and council members. I just want to say that I'm a CASA as well. And I had a youth from age 17 up to 21.
Excuse me. Did you fill out a card?
I did. And I still have a, Cassandra, I'm sorry, I'm Cassandra Black with San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services. I got excited over CASA because I think it's a wonderful, wonderful organization.
Okay.
Okay. And so now that I've given all my props and time to CASA, I want to talk about San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services. I won't take up much of your time. I just wanted to mention that along with the services that you already have on your application from us, that we also have a program called Trauma Recovery and Healing. And this program is about four, six, or eight weeks long in series. And what we're doing is we're actually bringing this service to the organizations on site. We're providing them with the facilitation, as well as all of the supplies. And what this particular program is, it is to help those who participate to find emotional recognition, as well as emotional management. And so far, we've been in various different places here in Victorville, to mention just a few. We've been at the Federal Prison Women's Camp. We've been at St. John of God's Rehab Drug and Alcohol Rehab Facility. And we've also been with victims who have also took with autism in the way of helping them with their victimization coping skills. And this particular program is designed, whereas we not only help them with the emotional checks, but we also provide for them writing, creative types of activities, all themed and selected to promote the healing process. And in doing so, we feel like we have come up with an approach to not only address it from an intervention aspect, but also from a prevention aspect. And in going out to the organizations, going on-site to them, it affords us the opportunity to not only be able to reach people from various types and populations, but also from a client perspective, we're able to reach those that are being highly targeted with victim selection, such as those that have the disability, such as those that have been victimized, and such as those that are repeating the cycle. And we're finding that from our participants, that they're giving us such positive feedback, telling us that they've not been able to really open up and express themselves as much as they have been during these weeks of actual workshop activities. And so we're very excited to continue going out into the community on-site to these organizations and becoming part of their curriculum and being able to participate in promoting the healing of those who've been traumatized by abuse, and particularly sexual assault. And with that being said, we want to just thank you all for the support you've given to us in the past. And of course, it is your support that helps us to bring these programs out into our community free of charge and to reach the masses that we do here in Victorville. Thank you. Do you have any other, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Vince Onkin. Roberto Gonzalez will be next.
Good evening, council members. Excuse me, my name is Vince Onkin. I'm the chairman of the board of Moses House Ministries. I'd like to take a moment to thank the city and the council members for your continued support of Moses House Ministries through the CDBG grant funding. Moses House has been administering and collaborative. Moses House has been administering a collaborative effort with Rosa Sharon, the Crisis Pregnancy Center here, in order to meet critical needs of families with young children living in Victorville. Last year, we provided much-needed resources and referrals, benefiting more than twenty-one-hundred individuals within our community. Nearly all of those families served by this collaboration are receiving some form of public assistance. These families often have very little incomes available to purchase these items they need for their children and families. These include diapers, clothing, household consumables, cribs, strollers, and other baby items. Through projects like this, like this one, families have access to these items and are made aware of the supportive services available to them, which many of them are already here, that can help move them towards self-sufficiency and independence. We look forward to continuing to serve the community and provide this much-needed program to Victorville families. We continue towards through the CDGB CDBG funding. Always had a problem with that, anyway. Any questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
My name's Roberto Gonzalez, I'm the Program Manager at Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board. So, on behalf of Inland Media, Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board, I'd like to thank you for your continuous support and I, and for your continued partnership with our programs. And so, Inland Fair Housing and Mediation Board is a nonprofit agency, and we're also a HUD-approved housing counseling agency. We're also a fair housing-qualified agency as well. So, we, we administer programs that help people with a variety of issues that are, are related to housing. So, one of our main programs that we fund through the CDBG, CDBG program at Victorville is our landlord and tenant counseling program. And so, in the last year, we were able to provide assistance to a thousand-five-hundred people that have, that had questions related to landlord and tenant issues. And so, some of the issues that we're able to help out with were issues related to evictions, rights and responsibilities of renters and landlords, and also repairs. So through our, through our continuous efforts, we've been able to assist people, ensure that they have adequate housing for themselves, and also ensure that people know their rights and responsibilities in terms of their, their rentals. In addition to that, our agency provides housing counseling to, to residents of Victorville, and that is to no cost to the city. But we've been able to assist people by providing homebuyer education, reverse mortgage counseling, Keep Your Home California programs for people that have fallen behind on their mortgage and require additional assistance in getting current with their mortgage. That program has helped people with, that are currently unemployed, and it has helped them pay for their mortgage for about eighteen months while they're getting back on their feet. So in addition to that, we've also helped out thirty-one people that have also fallen behind generally on their mortgage. And so, in addition to that, we've also provided assistance with fair housing complaints and concerns. So, our agency has staff available to help people with any questions they may have regarding to their, regarding to their fair housing rights. We've been able to assist people that have disabilities, request reasonable accommodations and modifications, and we've also been able to work hand-in-hand with the Housing Department at the city to put together informational workshops to the community regarding their fair housing rights, their landlord rights, landlord and tenant rights, and things like that. So, I, on behalf of my agency, I, I thank you for your continued support, and as we, as we go towards this new fiscal year, I, I request that you continue funding to our essential programs that are a big benefit to the community here in Victorville. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you very much.
Very much. Next is Marilia Bries. Marilia?
I just want to say thank you, first of all, for your support for High Desert Transitional Living Connection. This is the first year we've been funded, and we're very, very happy to be on board with the city. We not only, we, we also have Gateway Food Pantry and Clothes Closet. Basically, that's what we do right now, but we, in the future, we have big plans for the emancipated foster youth, to train them and skill them in job skills. And so, I'm looking forward to letting you all know what that entails, and I won't go into that right now, 'cause it would be too long, but it's exciting, and I hope that you will support us again next year. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Greg Barnes?
Good evening, respected, respected Council members and Madam Mayor. My name is Gregory Barnes, and I'm the Administrator for St. John of God Healthcare Services and Samaritan's Helping Hand. We're a local nonprofit with a high reputation. Purpose here tonight is to provide you with some information of the vital services that our agencies contribute to the High Desert and the Victor Valley communities for the past thirty years. Samaritan's Helping Hand is a community service agency that is a food bank where people who are hungry and unable to feed their families are able to come and receive enough food to provide them for a week. We're also the local hub for the homeless to come for a change of clothing, socks, or shoes for people who have nothing. We offer services to the elderly and the veterans who are in jeopardy of having their electric, gas, water, and their vital necessities terminated, because they can't afford the Last year, Samaritan's Helping Hand provided a total of two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen individuals and families with assistance, keeping them fed, clothed, and maintaining other basic services that many people take for granted. Since nineteen-eighty-five, St. John of God Healthcare Services has provided substance abuse treatment to the people of the High Desert and the surrounding areas. On average, in our residential program, thirty-seven individuals per month receive counseling, keeping them off the streets, and providing them with classes, vocational and educational training, as well as other necessary tools to maintain recovery so that they can re-enter society productively, positively, and become a benefit. We reunite fathers with their mothers, children with their parents, all with the single hope of rebuilding families and strengthening our community. We also offer an outpatient program that provides services to approximately sixty individuals per month, and a transitional living for individuals who can live there up to a year, some of them with their children, while they continue recovery, go to school, and eventually obtain a job and live a life that you and I do. It's our hopes that soon, we will be able to offer a veterans' home for those who have served our country and are suffering and fallen into hard times. I'd also like to point out that St. John of God Healthcare Services recently received Recovery Agency of the Year from the County of San Bernardino, two years running back-to-back. Our agencies have a longstanding history with partnering with many of the other organizations in the High Desert. Some of these respected agencies are St. Mary's Health, St. Joseph, ICR Staffing, Desert Communities United Way, High Desert Homeless Services, Victor Valley Rescue Mission, High Desert Outreach, Victor Valley Community Support Services, San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services, Veterans Administration, County of San Bernardino, Town of Apple Valley, and proudly, the City of Victorville. We are now and always have been a proud member of the Victor Valley Chamber, and consider ourselves an anchor in the community to those who are suffering and falling in hard times. We have made it our mission to make sure that we are there to help them in their time of need. I want to thank you for your time, I want to thank you for your partnership, and your continued support, and again, I thank you for any consideration that you might give us in continuing our partnerships, our efforts, and the services in this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure if I missed Jimmy Waldron.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and Council members. My name is Jimmy Waldron, I'm the Executive Director for High Desert Homeless Services. I would like to thank you for your continued support over the years. Without your guys' support, we would not have been able to help as many people as we have. Just over the last year, we've had five-hundred-and-eighty-nine clients that we helped house, give clothing, food, and help turn their lives around. One-hundred-and-seventy-two of those were children, twenty-six were seniors, twenty-one were veterans, and thirty-five percent of those clients were from Victorville. Currently, this year, we are, we are right now operating at maximum capacity, and twenty-one of those clients are from Victorville. What we do is, we're a ninety-day shelter. We continue to help the clients who come in, to provide them with education on how to apply for jobs. We have a resource room that we provide for them from Monday through Friday with a resource, with the employment specialist that helps them with their applications, their resumes, their cover letters, and then also does job interview skills with them, and then we do budgeting classes, life skills classes, and we try to give them the tools that are necessary so that we can return them to our community as productive members. Along with that, we also provide clothing to people who don't stay there on Monday, or on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We do street showers for people who don't stay there, for whatever reason they choose not to stay there. And but with your continued support, we were able to free up some of our other funding. We have funding that we have a program called Rapid Rehousing, where we're able to help some of our clients who've come in with their down, down payments and their deposits, and they don't have to pay that back. All the services that we provide are free, because you guys help us. We would hope that you guys continue to help us, and we wish that all the other cities were as nice to work with as you guys were. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Therefore, unless there's someone else that would like to come up and speak, I don't see anyone, so I close the public hearing. Any comments or questions by Council members?
I have a comment. The, I hope everyone would have a chance to read the summary of the city's goals and objectives. I know this is not, it shouldn't be cast in concrete, but one of the things I'd like to, to see added to the goals and objectives, it's understood that we encourage and work with volunteers, community nonprofit corporations, assist as good as we can, sometimes lending staff assistance and the allocation of CDB, CDBG grants and home grants. But it's not stated that that's our goal, to continue to work and encourage those organizations to, to continue helping the people of the city, as well as the city. It's understood, but it's not stated. I'd like to see it stated. I think they should be told how much the city appreciates their efforts, especially the volunteers who take a lot of time volunteering on, on their agency's behalf, and as a result, on the city's behalf, and as a result, on the citizens of the city. I'd just like to see it in there, so that, I know we thank them occasionally, it's not enough, and I wish we could do more, but if we could just add one goal, to continue working with those nonprofit organizations and the volunteers who make them up, I think they would appreciate it, and I think it'd be a way of the city saying thank you to those people.
Okay, we move on to consent calendar. Item C-one through C-ten can be approved with one motion, unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd actually like to call it George Duran, our Code Enforcement Official. Mayor Protim Cox pointed out that the backup materials for C-nine, an attachment, was inadvertently left off describing the program in detail. So, George, if you could give us an idea for what we're doing with regard to the demolition of those four homes, their locations, if you happen to have them on you. This is a program that the council asked for probably eighteen months ago or so, and we've been working on this as we go. So, George, just give us a brief, brief description of this project, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Yeah, this is a demolition for four properties located on Union Street, Palmdale, Palmdale Road, and actually, Mobile Home Park, Mobile Home Unit Number Sixty-Eight, John Street, and Turner Road. The, after completing enforcement actions on these properties, we've deemed them to be completely substandard, to the point of, they can't be repaired. We completed asbestos testing and went out to bid through our help with our folks in finance and purchasing. We had conducted a job walk and received, we had twelve or so bidders. We received one bid from George Bryant Construction. A, George Bryant Construction has been a prior contractor of ours, he's done a great job before, and so we've determined that, based on the scope and the bidding, that we, it's, it's appropriate, the, the amount of bid that we saw in there was, was fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, anyone?
I want to make a comment, I hate to figure on every item, and I assure you I won't, but we, we get criticized sometimes because we don't put local contractors to work or local individuals to work, because we don't make special provisions for hiring local individuals. We do everything we can, but we have to follow state law. And when you go out for bids, and there's a, what, eleven companies represented and only one bids, there's not much we can do about that. We would love to see all these contractors go to local contractors. Do we still provide that five percent?
We do have, it's three or five, depending on, of a local bidder preference, yes?
So, we've gone out of our way to try to assist local businesses, including local bidder, bidder preference, but I just want to point out that, watch the staff go through this, they're following the letter to the law, they're doing the right thing, they're doing very good work, and when local individuals don't get the bid, there's not a lot we can do about it. We have to follow the procedure set in law.
Thank you. Other item that needs to be discussed?
I'll go ahead and move consent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEchrans, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now, we move on to written communications. Item D-one, ground lease for land at Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council approve the ground lease and authorize the mayor to execute the lease.
I make, that's our question, let me move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEchrans. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D-two, agreement for processing of materials at Burt Tech Expanded Facility. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the processing agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and accept rates for processing services.
For approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEchrans, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D-three, award of a piggyback construction contract to Fueling and Service Technologies, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve an additional appropriation request in the amount of nine-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-three dollars from Fund One Twenty, the CNG Fueling Station Fund, and the piggyback award of a construction contract to Fueling and Service Technologies, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-three dollars for the replacement of two compressed natural gas dispensers for fiscal year twenty-sixteen,
I'm assuming, staff, that we have sufficient income from this activity to cover the cost of this capital expenditure?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor Protim?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Mc... Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D4, purchase of a 2017 Kenworth T370 conventional cab truck with Packmore rear loader refuse body in the amount of $124,968.98. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of one 2017 Kenworth T370 conventional cab truck with Packmore rear loader refuse body under the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number 102811, and as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2016, 2017 capital improvement project budget.
For approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D5, ground sublease agreement by Inbetween Suburban Propane LP and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve a ground sublease agreement by Inbetween Suburban Propane LP and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority for 1.2 acres of vacant land and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
I have a question, staff. This, this item provides for a rental agreement, but somewhere along the line, I read 3% commission. Is that paid monthly, yearly, 10 years? How's that work? It's over the 10-year period, it's a $9,000 commission.
That's correct. And it's payable in three separate installments. One at the signing of the lease, the second at the start of the tenant improvements, and the third payment at the completion of the tenant improvements.
So, it's not paid monthly with the lease payments? It's paid?
Yeah, it's not paid monthly with the lease payments.
Not paid monthly? So, since part of the negotiation is a 10-year lease agreement, and we know the month, so they do get $9,424.90? That's, that's how much that three commission. There's a 10-year request extension. Do they get a commission on that?
They do not. It's only on the initial 10-year term.
So, there's no commission on the second 10-year extension if it's granted?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
We now move to public comments. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak? I don't see anyone. So, may we have reports from our city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow at 10:30 in the morning at Center Street Park, we have a demonstration garden ribbon cutting. Hopefully, you all can make it there, get an idea for what you can do when you take out your turf, grass, still keep your yard beautiful. And then this Saturday, October 22nd, is our Victorville Community Cleanup Day citywide. We have over 850 volunteers that will be out throughout the city in bright blue shirts, helping pick up and clean up our city. So, thank you to the volunteers, and watch out for them if you're driving. And then Saturday, November 5th, is the Shred Fest at the Victor Valley Material Recovery Facility. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Doug, I, I received your memo this afternoon and was made aware of a press release that was put out by a former council member of ours, running for county supervisor Angela Vias, on Syrian refugees being dumped in Victorville, and that this council is ignoring it. We are sweeping it under the rug, so to speak. We're not doing anything to prevent it. And I would just like you to at least address the council in the public as to, you know, what really is truly going on, because it's, it's easy to have your own opinion, but not your own facts. And in this case, this is a complete distortion of facts. It's lies, and I'd just like you to address it.
Certainly, Councilmember McEckern. Couple of local cities adopted resolutions opposing telling the federal government that they would not accept Syrian refugees into their city. This was probably six or eight months ago. There were a few states that the governor of that state came out and said sort of the same thing, that they would not accept them. And we had staff research it to find out that, in fact, the federal government needs no authority from the city, from the county, or from the state to place refugees from any country, anywhere they choose, nor do they give us any notice thereof. So, we don't know how many or where they would be placed, nor do we have any ability to prevent or encourage them to be placed here. So, it's a very private thing that the federal government handles, and although, you know, passing a resolution may provide, you know, some public relations, assuming the public agrees with whatever the resolution says, the federal government simply won't pay any attention to it because it doesn't matter what the city thinks.
And if I could ask our captain, Sam Lucia, I mean, in essence, even if we pass a resolution, that does not give you any ability to enforce it to remove them if they were here? Is that correct?
No. As the same major said, it's completely out of our hands when it's, when it's the federal government's decision.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just have a comment. I have heard recently a couple of times that our council meetings are very complicated and difficult for people to follow and understand. I'm continually reaching out to individuals, and if there's anything that they need or want, let us know. Come to the council, call us, call City Hall. I hadn't heard that, but since it's floating around, I assume it's for political purposes, because if it's true, we need to know that. We have tried to make this as understandable as it possibly can. We also, we encourage and invite our citizens, people who live in the city, to come to these meetings, be a part of it, be a part of what's going on in the community, and let us know what your, what your comments and feelings are. There are a lot from phone calls and letters and emails and on, so we listen, we take it seriously. But if, if that is occurring, please tell us. I don't think it is, but...
Now, the other thing that I understand that we are, or should I phrase that? It has been said that our meetings are too short, that we don't even have an agenda to present to the public. Sometimes we do have agendas that can be two to three hours long.
Or 1,200 pages long.
Yeah. And for us, it means a lot of hours of reading and researching. So, if it happens to be a 45-minute agenda or meeting, it's not because the agenda is not a lengthy one. Maybe it's just that we do our study and research before we come in to present to the public. Thank you.
Efficiency in action, folks.
Anything else? Very well. This meeting is adjourned.